Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, Al, let's start with roll call.
Here.
Gross, here.
Hopper.
Here.
Ivan.
Here.
Minor.
Here.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
City Manager Juleon.
Here.
City Attorney Denherter.
Here.
Thank you very much. Now you have before you the minutes of the regular meeting of October 8th, 2018. What is your pleasure?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you very much. Motion passes. And now, City Managers report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the Commission, and the public. I'm going to be passing around the, a sign-up sheet pertaining to the Yankton-Marne Creek Corridor Utilities Preservation Project that you acted on, on October 8th. We were to get a roster of everyone present included in the information of the public hearing, and we failed to pass it around up here. So if you were here on October 8th, if you would please just sign your name, and then you can just put representing, it says City of, you can put City of Yankton where it says that, so pass that around. That needs to get back to Mr. Mingo. Also, just a note for the media. The State of the Community address is occurring next Tuesday. That's October 30th at noon, 11:45 more likely to 1 o'clock. So I'm not sure which Commission members may be there, but should we have a quorum present, there will be no public action taken or meet, or discussed, no city business discussed. Sales tax, you may all have seen the sales tax numbers. We had a great month, the previous month, up 12.96 percent, which brings us cumulative difference for the year up 4.66 percent. So that's the way we'd like to be headed towards the end of the year, and we hope that type of return continues. Other than that, just a general reminder for folks that next Wednesday is Halloween, so please use cautious, be cautious as you're driving about and you're around town for all the ghouls and goblins trick-or-treating. Unless there's questions for me, I'll let you move on to your business.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the City Manager? All right, then we'll move on to public appearances, and this is a time for anyone who wishes to address the Commission about an item not on tonight's agenda. You can step up to the podium. We do have one scheduled public appearance tonight, and that is Kurt Bernard, who would like to talk to us about a potential downtown attraction. If you could introduce yourself, Kurt.
Test, test, we're there. I'll say that again. Kurt Bernard and my marvelous wife, who is also my partner, who will say a few words tonight. As you know, we've been working in the downtown area for 20-plus years, doing a lot of different zany things with buildings. We've got hotel space down there, event center space. We've tried a variety of food kinds of things at different times. Some of them seem to work better than others. We do a lot of catering with part of our events. We do a lot with apartments and other retail venues. So we're kind of a contractor and kind of a set of businesses. In any case, for the last several years, we always are turning over and ahead, what kinds of things could we do that would create more activity in Yankton, activity in the downtown, more making Yankton a more fun place to live and visit. So we've done things like, last year, we turned our back patio into this large Christmas scene. That was kind of fun for the kids. There's a lot of pictures that we had, that we loaded on Facebook and other places, and you can see that. But anyhow, about, I don't know, three, four years ago, I started thinking about, gee, what could you do in addition to that? So we looked into freon lines below concrete to create skating rinks, and we talked about Christmas markets and 100 other ideas that we've just kind of, she and I just kind of bounced around with people in the community. But I got to looking at zip lines and rope courses and things like that. And if you go online and you Google those things, you can see there's a lot of that's happening out in the world. Some of it in town, most of it out in tree areas and forests. So I started contacting around, looking for some consultant person that could help me figure this thing out. So in any case, what I'm going to do is spend a few thousand dollars of my own money, bring in a company from the Colorado area that does this for a living, all the way across the United States. And they'll be in the week after Thanksgiving. It'll take them a month or two to put together a feasibility study and say what's possible and what isn't possible. And gee, what do the numbers look like, and is there any potential to have any volume of traffic from doing that? What's the appeal? But in any case, we got to looking at it, and the more we started looking at it, especially with what great things you've done with Walnut Street, we thought if we could run it down Walnut Street towards the river from, we're really nice, expensive staircase in the north corner of the Riverfront Building. It's roughly 50-foot tall. These lines drop at about 6 percent grade. So in about a two-block period of time, you'd drop 38 feet. That would put you from Third and Walnut almost to the river's edge if you went that direction. But we'll let them figure out those kind of details. But for us, the cost-reducing factor is the fact they got three stories of beautiful staircase already built. If I can add on to it, get through the roof, put some sort of safe platform up there, maybe we get this done without spending a gazillion dollars on it. But in any case, that's what the story's about, and if you want to walk them... I won't say it. I was going to say something like that, but I thought I'll pay later. In any case, in your package, you should have a little write-up. I hope we got copies to you guys. We were late getting it done today. In any case, Cena pulled this together, and she kind of elaborated greatly on what might be possible within the Riverfront Event Center complex. There are photos in there that Eric Ambrosia over at Emerson, over at District 3 helped us build, and they're kind of a photoshopped thing from the top corner of the Riverfront headed towards the river. I don't know if that's the most optimal, though. Tell us what might work. But at least that's a concept drawing. If you read around the Internet, you can see that places like Las Vegas or Dubai have those kinds of things. They seem fairly popular. I think I was talking with Dave Mingo. If he's around here somewhere, he actually was brave enough to try it in Las Vegas, he said. So, in any case, there's also a picture of this big steel staircase that's inside the Riverfront Event Center that's already there and paid for, and perhaps we can use that. So all I wanted to do tonight was just to introduce the idea, let you guys think a little bit about it. But I'll come back to our City Manager and say, hey, would you like to have any of your staff sit in on the consultants' walk-around that they're going to do the week after Thanksgiving? They're going to be here for like a day, day and a half. Questions that have kind of bounced towards me a little bit, usually sent around, well, what about the liability? So I asked this consulting company about that, and they said, here's a couple of names of the two major companies that do business in this industry for insurance. So this guy Cameron called me back today, and the other guy emailed me back, and basically what they tend to do is they, the owner-operator has to acquire insurance, that's liability insurance at the level that's negotiated with the powers that be, yourselves, I guess. And then you wind up being a additional insured on the policy that I pay for. So then you're covered through this policy. The policy pricing and, actually, it's just the pricing. They have dollar minimums, is what I was thinking, but they have dollar minimums, and then above that, it's based on how many sales you do. So apparently, if you're in Las Vegas and you do a gazillion dollars' worth of sales in this category, they pay a lot more for liability insurance than, say, we might in Little Yankton, which I'm not even sure if you'd do it 12 months of the year yet. Is this a summertime thing? Is this a special occasion thing? How's all that work? So they're going to help me figure all that out. So this is just to introduce the idea to you guys, let you know what's going on, because I'm going to knock on Amy's, already have knocked on Amy's door and said, hey, would you like to have somebody come down and help me ask questions? Enough said? Questions?
So Kurt, you said you're having, you're going to pay the consultant to come in?
Yes, we'll pay the freight to have the consultant, because frankly, it's a nice idea right now, but I'm not sure whether it'll pay for itself, you know, how will that be engineered? Will it lay out like I think it will? You know, is that building going to work? You know, you would actually wind up flying over the sidewalk and over Walnut Street if you go the route that at least I can see. You'd wind up landing to the left or the right of the Meridian Bridge down there. Will it make it all the way to the river? I don't think it'll make it to the other side of the river, just my eyeball. It's too flat. You've got to get up higher to do that, I guess. But they will help us figure stuff out, but I thought we might as well get people involved early on, and we'll try to get all the questions answered.
So did they figure out the structural everything, or is it just where they think the best route would be for this?
They'll do both. I don't think they, later on in like Step 2, they'll have a structural engineer come and detail it out, exactly how you have to build it and all that. Although they do build them, so I don't know if they're in-house people that do that or what, but at least in their initial feasibility proposal, they're going through and looking at the sighting and the layout and the process of how it would be managed and the financials, meaning how many sales do you expect? How often do you, I mean, I assume you're not going to sell a lot of this in February when it's 14 below, but maybe, I don't know. Hopefully, they can tell me that sort of thing. And they do a lot of this around the country. They did a really big park that you could look up and read about for the Boy Scouts in, I think it's either Virginia or West Virginia. And it was Bechtel and Scott's Foundation that helped to finance that, much bigger-scale thing than what we're talking about. But thousands of feet of zip line, and then they do rope courses where the kids climb up these things, and they've got safety harnesses on, but they can do an adventure walking across this rope that goes between the two towers and the bridge. No, that's a different idea. Anyhow. Like I said, I've been thinking about this stuff for a little too long, maybe. Okay? Thanks. Thank you.
Kurt, I appreciate your energy and you and Cena for everything you've done downtown. And I definitely like to look at things, especially when I think one of our main goals is we create an infrastructure like we're doing in Walnut Street. And I love the idea that private partnerships are possible, whatever ideas we have or implement. I think it's exciting to look at different ideas for that, and how we can enhance our downtown and bring more people to the city. Thank you.
Thanks. If you look at the front cover of your package tonight, it says, "Yankton, Where Ideas Flow", and I think this, doing a few of these kinds of things really helped to stamp or brand you as a community that has some of that stuff going on. Thanks, guys.
Yeah, thank you for your patience as we've worked through that.
Well, I guess for the Commission, are you looking for a direction? We don't know when they'll be here, or if the city can't make it, you're still going to proceed on your side?
At this point, we could move the date, but at this point, their schedule works out the week after Thanksgiving. When I've spoken to the City a little bit beforehand, they ended, I said maybe we should avoid that Monday, just right after Thanksgiving, but with the rest of the week, someday in that rest of the week word. And the answer was initially yes, but we've got to talk with you guys.
Just to listen in and be there, not necessarily to bring, do any work, bring any ideas?
I mean, the whole thing, I didn't have to come back to you guys for approval anyway, but if I can burn up a little of their time to ask the right questions and make sure that everybody is comfortable, then we can figure it out again.
You know what we really wanted to do was put it on top of the chin. And we'll get there. But this is quicker and less money. No, you're not.
Are there any more Commission questions, or any more Commission discussion on this item?
So I'm okay with the Commission spending some staff time to sit down with their folks and see what we... We'll get together with you guys and work, pinpoint the date.
All right, once again, this is the time for public appearances, so if you would like to address the Commission about an item not on tonight's agenda, you are welcome to step to the podium. All right. Moving on to the consent item agenda. We have consideration of memorandum 18-211 and resolution 18-71 recommending that November 26, 2018 be established as the date for a public hearing on the special assessment role for removal of noxious vegetation and abatement. What is your pleasure? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye. All those opposed? Thank you very much. Now on to old business. We have consideration of memorandum 18-216 regarding the request for a transfer of ownership of a retail on-off-sale malt beverage license for July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019 from Shreenish LLC, doing business as JR's Oasis, to TC Corner LLC, doing business as JR's Oasis, located at 2404 East Highway 50. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any Commission discussion on this item? Would anyone from the public like to address the Commission about this item? Roll call. Aye, motion passes. Number two, under old business, is consideration of memorandum 18-217 regarding the request for a transfer of ownership of a package off-sale liquor license for January 1st, 2018 to December 31st, 2018 from Shreenish LLC, doing business as JR's Oasis, to TC Corner LLC, doing business as JR's Oasis, once again at 2404 East Highway 50. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any Commission discussion on this item? Would anyone from the public like to address the Commission about this item? Roll call. Aye, motion passes. Number three, under old business, is consideration of memorandum 18-218 regarding the request for a special events on-sale liquor license for December 11th, 2018 from the Chamber of Commerce, and this will be at the Mead Cultural Education Center at 82 Mickelson Drive. What is your pleasure?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any Commission discussion on this item? Would anyone from the public like to address the Commission about this item? Roll call. Aye, motion passes. Now on to new business. We have a presentation by Mid-American Energy regarding the natural gas franchise agreement. And we have a representative of Mid-American with us here tonight to introduce the subject.
He was a lot, he was a lot taller than I was. And I left my support person, but I think Lance just had a service call, so apologies for that. But the gentleman that was sitting next to me is Lance Polacek. He is the community contact for Yankton. So in the future, if you ever need anything, Amy has Dan's contact information, or Lance's contact information. He replaced Dan Dammers, who recently retired with Mid-American. But I'm Mark Renders. I'm the franchise manager for Mid-American Energy Company. I'm here tonight to talk to you about renewing the natural gas franchise, which we did 20 years ago with the City of Yankton. Appreciate, of course, the long-term partnership we've had with the community, and that's what we're here to talk about continuing tonight. I've been in contact with Amy a couple of weeks now and provided some information, and each of you have a packet, except for the City Attorney, because I ran out, and I deeply apologize, but I think he's already seen a lot of the documents. But on the left-hand side is just the existing natural gas franchise, which was done in December of 1998. Brad Olson was the mayor, and the finance officer is the same gentleman doing it? No. And then just behind that's a little, little information about wind generation. I know, obviously, we don't provide the electricity for the community, but there's a lot of questions about wind generation in the news these days, and Mid-American is actually the largest investor-owned utility in the United States for wind generation. Our goal is to get to 100 percent capacity for wind generation, and we're trying to accomplish that by 2020. So if you happen to drive across to Iowa and you get on I-80, you're going to see an awful lot of wind turbines, and actually, Highway 22, there's a lot of them up that way.
Why don't you provide electrical to Yankton?
That is a great question. I don't know where that ever came down, if the, if the South Dakota Public Utilities Commission years ago assigned service territories, and it wasn't Mid-American. We really don't have any electric service in South Dakota except for Alcestor, and then downright Metro Sioux City. You've got North Sioux City and Dakota Dunes. We do serve natural gas with about 30 communities in what we call southeast South Dakota, but that actually stretches just north of Sioux Falls, too, so. I can ask a more specific question, though, and find out, but... And then on the right-hand side, just a little bit of information about the renewal process itself. If you're like me, before I took this job, a couple of years ago, I wasn't real familiar with utility franchises, but basically, it is just a legal agreement that gives us the right to use the public right-of-way here in town for all of our natural gas facilities to serve the customers in Yankton. It's the only thing that's recognized by the South Dakota Public Utilities Commission, and that's why it's important for you folks as well as Mid-American. And then I have the two documents. One is the actual franchise agreement, which I think your City Attorney is going through, and attorneys like that language, but people like me like what I call the summary, which is that other document right there. And I was just going to hit a couple of spots on that and answer then any questions you might have. But the natural gas franchise, like I said, was done in '98, so it's a 20-year franchise, so it expires in December of this year. Proposed duration is 20 years. That's in Section 1. Three, again, just kind of gives us the right to use the public right-of-way here in town. Section 4 is probably one of the more important things for the city in that it puts the cost of relocation back on Mid-American Energy. So if we're needing to redo 21st Street with a partnership with you folks, Mid-American pays for the relocation of our facilities along those lines. Five, notes the fact that when the guys are working out there on the street improvement, they're not going to take their sweet time, and they're going to get the work set up and done and moved on. And when they're all done with it, we're going to put concrete back on concrete, asphalt on asphalt, all those kinds of things. Seven, just does qualify on the relocation a little bit more in that we pay for a relocation at the same location only every 10 years. What really happened in that regard was years ago, about five, six years ago, on the other side of Iowa, there was a community that did some work on an intersection. We moved our stuff. Year later, they wanted to do it again, and then two years later, they wanted to do us again, and it gets to the point like, oh, yeah, somebody needs to be planning ahead better. So that's what that's about. We do charge back if, on relocation of our facilities, if it's a commercial or a private developer. Section 9 talks about in emergency situations, there's language in there for the city to shut off our natural gas facilities. Otherwise, a gentleman like Lance is in charge of that when there's a service call that comes in. 10 and 11 and 12 are important, we also believe, for the city in that it demifies the city from any damages that might result from a project we're working on. Let's say Tuesday at 4 o'clock, we didn't quite get it done. We block it off with tape and boards, and if somebody comes along and falls down and gets hurt, they're going to sue Mid-American, and they'll probably sue you folks as well. But if they ended up getting any damages, Mid-American would pay for that. 13, just notes that we will provide our mapping information on our infrastructure to the city on a project. 14, 15, talk about the fact that South Dakota Public Utilities Commission is our boss. So if you're not happy with something we're doing, we want to know about it. My business card is there on the right-hand front. Lance, you can contact anytime as well, about anything, but specifically about gas service. But ultimately, if you're not happy with us, the South Dakota Public Utilities Commission is our boss. And then goes on down the line, once you folks are willing to approve a new ordinance and get it published in the newspaper, the existing ordinance that was done in 1998 goes away. We, Mid-American, will pay for all publication costs. Amy, I don't know if we've talked about this or not, but you do public hearing notices in the paper, so that. And then if you publish the full franchise, once the Commission approves it all, Mid-American will reimburse the city for all those kinds of costs. And this gentleman is Lance. He's back now. He's our community contact for Yankton. Any questions that I can answer, or try to answer?
So what options do we have? And is this a typical length of time? Or, I mean, what are we, are we getting a, this the best options? We, I mean, it seems like other cities have different options, but are we faced with any other options besides Mid-American Energy?
This is a non-exclusive franchise, so in theory, yes, but the, you have to basically make a case to the South Dakota Public Utilities Commission that, you know, there's a need for a different provider if you're not happy with us.
Or more gas.
Or more gas. That's a problem. It's really not, Mid-American is not the supplier, if that's the right word, for the natural gas. You know, we're the transmission, distribution, facility, utility. The supplier is Northern Natural Gas for this part of the country, and they have not found a way really to get Northern, to get more supply up this way.
So you're saying we can negotiate that into this? You probably are well aware that we're, Yankton County could use some more natural gas.
Yes, yes. Amy and I visited about it, Lance and I visited about it. I know it's a, it's a common thing that you've talked about during various economic development meetings with others in the company as well. It's a problem. But of course, the problem is the cost of, you know, running additional lines and getting that supply to this part of the state.
So have these agreements evolved at all over the last 20 years, or are they basically the same now as they were then?
I think if you compared the two, and I, I'm sure your City Attorney has taken a look at that, for the most part, it's the same. There's some tweaks that have gone on over the years. That relocation language I talked about is different, and it's more specific now in there. Litigation, I think, is covered better in this. So there's some of those kinds of things, but the crux of the agreements are the same. And going back to your question, I would just like to say, I hope you guys are happy with us. We like to think our prices are extremely competitive, and the service reliability is solid. If it's not, that's, again, what we want to talk about with you guys.
I think this would be a question for Adam and his department. So Section 9, in the event of public emergency situations, again, just hypothetically, city may make reasonable efforts to shut off the flow of gas, so who's your go-to? And do you... And do you have anybody?
Ah, the best thing for us to be would keep people away from that if there was any type of emergency like that. I don't think we would attempt to shut anything off on ourselves.
So I would agree, unless there's some kind of training that Mid-American's willing to, you know, pay up for. But I mean, what's the point of having that language in here? Because I would agree with Adam's remarks. I don't know why we'd ever go close to something like that.
It would be an extreme rare circumstance. You know, Lance and the guys are based out of Yankton. I don't know how long it would take you to get to any part of town in Yankton, but...
I have experience with Lance. He's very fast.
Yeah. I think it probably came about because some other city wanted that language in there and the fact that they didn't think a Mid-American person could get there within half hour, a reasonable amount of time. So they wanted the language in there so that they, as a city, could shut it off. We have continued that in there because, for the most part, our franchises are the same from city to city to city.
And Tony, the agreement, the actual verbiage of the contract says that...
Yeah, I was just using the summary for the public's benefit.
Fair enough, yeah. But it does indicate that we can do that if the city deems that it's necessary under the circumstances. So if our best call is to just keep everybody away, we have the ability to do that.
Are there any more commission discussions or discussion items? Would anyone from the public like to address the commission on this item?
Hi, Nancy Winandy from Yankton Air Progressive Growth. And I just want to thank Mid-American for being a great community partner. While they have not been able to solve our natural gas situation, they have been a willing partner and come to the table several times in that conversation, as well as they have a representative out of Sioux City, Sam Wagner, who comes up and really helps us with some community projects. And Mid-American has provided Yankton Air Progressive Growth some grant funding on a couple of different opportunities. They helped fund our intern this summer, as well as some other projects before my tenure at Yankton Air Progressive Growth. So I do believe that they have been a good community partner.
Excellent to hear. And that's not part of the franchise, but that is a very true fact. We do want to be a solid partner with you on the economic development side as well. And we do try. And Sam is relatively new to the team, but I know he's been up here a couple of times already in the last couple of months. And he's actually the one that would address your question about commodity availability.
Well, and the commission certainly echoes Nancy's sentiments about you being a good partner in the community.
Thank you, Mayor.
Would anyone else from the public like to address the commission on this item? All right, so as a commission, do we have direction to set a public hearing in November? Do we need to make a motion on that?
I don't necessarily need a motion. If anybody objects to that, I'd like to know that. Otherwise, our process will be, we'll set the introduction on the 13th of November, our next meeting, and then we'll set the public hearing and publish the public hearing for the 26th with the franchise agreement.
All right. Thank you very much, Mark. Number two under new business is consideration of memorandum 18-215 regarding Summit Activity Center rate changes. What is your pleasure?
Can you move the memorandum? Second.
You have a motion and a second. Todd, would you like to walk us through what changes are being proposed?
You bet. For the most part, we're approximately requesting the ability to increase fees about 6%. Again, depending on which one you're looking at, it might be more, it might be a little bit less. But we try to keep even numbers when we go through our charts, so that's why everything's just a little bit different. But where we're at currently and what we looked at was Great Life, knowing that we do have people in town that are already utilizing their services, not necessarily just for golf. Some people just for fitness, but there is a combination of people doing both the fitness and the golf out there. But there are just fitness memberships here in town. And then also looking at Mitchell, who just built a new indoor pool, and at their community rec center, fitness center, looking what their rates were at. So historically, we've been lower than everybody else in town, whether you're talking Anytime Fitness or Fitness 365 and other ones in the past. But looking to try to catch up and get back to closer to what the market rate would be. And you can still see, even with the 6% increase, we're still on the low side by quite a ways, whether you're looking at the yearly, annual memberships, or if you're thinking about paying monthly, making those comparisons. So we do have a number of different types of memberships shown here, and then there are some discounts. Military do get discounts, and we do work with businesses in town on corporate rates. So we do have a corporate rate available, but we work with the business on that and they do some billing for us that way.
Commissioners, do you have any discussion items?
Todd, can you guesstimate what will be the overall dollar implication if, let's just say, all things stay equal, membership-wise, at the SAC? How much additional funding will this amount to?
I didn't pencil it out. It varies year to year, depending on obviously our number of memberships and the type of memberships. And then the other variable we got going forward that we've seen now this last year is the Great Life membership. So again, people can become a Great Life member and then utilize our facility. So we've lost, you know, a good two dozen memberships to, from the Summit Activity Center to Great Life. So it just really depends that way. Again, if all numbers stayed the same, obviously, you'd be about a 6% increase. But then we got to factor in on the expense side, of course, we've got increases to our wages, whether it's full-time or part-timers. We do run our recreation programs through the Summit Activity Center. So it's not just memberships and facility expenses. It is our summer rec programs, our programs in the winter, coaches, adult leagues, trophies, t-shirts, all of those different type of things. So I don't have an exact answer for that question.
So next summer, if folks show up to Memorial Park Pool and it's closed, it's under construction, pretty good chance that's an opportunity for us as well to maybe increase membership or at least daily visits to the Summit Activity Center?
Yes, yes, we would. When and if the Memorial Park Pool gets shut down for construction season, however long that construction may be, hopefully just one summer. But yes, the Summit Activity Center, we would look to do expanded hours there with the pool that we have there, obviously, to make up for the difference by not having an outdoor pool. So yeah, it would be a great opportunity to try to get people in the doors. Again, we utilize no-school specials right now. The Optimist Club for years has worked with us to get people in the door. Both no-school specials, Optimist Club, sometimes the Optimist Club, those are free swimming gyms, and the Optimists will give us a little bit of money to do those. Our no-school specials are either a dollar or two to get children in the door when there's no school. So yeah, we realize that if we can get people in the door to see our facility, then we've got a chance to either get a quarterly membership or maybe even an annual membership. So again, we try to do those different type of things to get people in the door. And if and when we don't have an outdoor pool, that would be a great opportunity for our Summit Activity Center.
Sorry, I agree completely. So just thinking out loud then, would it maybe make sense to really try and push that? You know, expand on this opportunity, as I see it, with the Summit Activity Center, get more people in there and not necessarily raise rates. I mean, I think that might be an unfortunate thing to coincide with closing down Memorial Park Pool, that we're also raising rates at Summit Activity Center. But in my head, I'm thinking if that means we're able to get 50, 60, 70 more members out of this deal, that's a pretty big, you know, cash implication, you know, compared to raising rates 6%. Now, just something to think about, anyway. I don't know if you really do need a decision from us tonight on whether or not to raise rates, but again, I just see it as a big opportunity for Summit Activity Center to get a lot more traffic during next year's summer if there's no Memorial Park Pool because it's under construction.
Yeah, anytime you raise rates, you have the formula to try to figure out. If we raise rates by so much and then we lose some members because of it, did we really gain anything on the revenue side? The other thing to say on value, again, back through the time, when I first came to Yankton, Summit Activity Center, you bought a membership. And then if you wanted to go to classes, whether it's aerobics or water aerobics or morning classes, yoga, whatever, you had to pay a fee for those separately. So in time, we've incorporated those into our membership. So if you pay a daily fee or a membership, you get to do those programming. We're working with Roger Smith, MTC Smith Insurance, to look to the South Dakota Pool to make sure we can do this. There are a few other recreation facilities that we've talked to in the state that do this, so we're trying to see if we can do it. But it's called supervised swim. So currently, if you're above 18 and you come into our aquatics facility, you can swim. We don't need a guard on the deck, and it's at your own risk. Some facilities in the state of South Dakota do supervised swims where if you have children under 18, but you have somebody 18 or older, they can supervise the swim without having guards on the deck. So again, there's some other facilities doing it in the state. We're checking with our insurance agents to make sure that we can get away with it and figure out how we're going to do it, and I should say, get away with it, put it into play. But we think that would have a big impact on the value of our membership. Again, Amy realizes this, she's heard the comments, but one of the biggest things we have is the complaint about the limited amount of time people have available to get into that pool, again, excluding if they're an adult. But if they've got families and kids, they want to have access to that pool. So we're looking at a supervised swim where, my example would be, I have two, a seven and a five-year-old daughter. I could bring them in. Again, we have a lot of programming that goes on in there, whether it's our own programming or others, mainly swim lessons, water aerobics, swim team. So we might look at having limited hours when this supervised swim could happen. But I could take my children in, if it's advertised supervised swim, I could take my children in and get them into the water and be in the water with them and let them swim, not have guards on the deck. It's not an open swim. So we're hoping we can get that worked out with insurance and go that route. We think that'll build some value into our SAC membership. Again, kind of like what you're talking about, getting people in the door next summer, into our indoor pool to see the facility and what a value it can be.
So what's the timeframe that you'd like to hear from us on these rates? Do you need an answer here tonight so you can plan accordingly for 2019? Are you okay if we get a little bit more certainty here in the community as to what next summer's opportunities are going to look like for swimming recreation inside city limits?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. So essentially, if we would maybe wait another meeting or two before deciding on this?
Yeah, normally, going off our last time schedule, when we did this in 2017, we usually send out letters to the membership right after the New Year. So yes, we do have time. The other thing would be figuring out, we dive in Yankton, in preliminary talks next year, we don't think the outdoor pool would be closed. But again, we'll know more once we sit down with Stockwell and Water Technology and start the design process and really talk timeline and construction. But as of right now, I don't think the pool, outdoor pool, would be closed in 2019. But we'll know more in a few weeks, so.
And I'm assuming we have the ability to change. I mean, if we approved it tonight, we have the ability to change or adjust anytime we want to. If that's correct?
Yeah, yeah. Like I said, we won't send letters until, this just gives us time to prepare the letter and get ready. We'll notify the school. Again, not that they have business interest in running the recreation center part of it, but again, just so they know, because they do get calls about co-ownership at the facility. So we'd get our letters ready in January, be able to get them sent out. And then again, the March 1 deadline is for annuals and monthlies and quarterlies. Our corporate members, we don't put in effect until the last quarter of the year. Again, just to give businesses, we realize there's budgeting. And again, usually, the employees are paying for their membership, but sometimes the businesses are throwing in some money, too. So we make this effective and then give them notice that it's not going to get into place until the last quarter of 2019. So yeah, we have a little bit of time. Either you pass it tonight and we can change it going forward, if we know more in the next month, or if you want to wait, we can bring it back in a month or whenever you say.
I move the memorandum. I think we have a responsibility to balance the budget, if you will. We're losing considerable money at the summit, and this is, was proposed to close the gap. It's not going to close the gap completely. And so I think we need to take this step and deal with the other issues that are out there when appropriate.
We don't even know how much it's going to close the gap, though, Charlie.
Todd can run some additional numbers for us between now and the next commission meeting. That was the first question that I asked, just out of curiosity, because I know why you asked the question, but I think that's an important answer for us to understand first.
It won't be enough. I'm just saying.
I think if it's fair and we, at least we're showing a gesture, at least try to close the gap somewhat. I know we're a long ways off. At this minute, we're spending a lot of money remodeling right now. And in order to recoup some of that, I think it's just a good gesture, goodwill, to at least increase it, as long as we're not out of line compared to Mitchell and other cities. I think it's appropriate to move forward now to at least, you know, get a little bit more revenue to offset some of our expenses, especially with our remodeling.
Is there any more commission discussion?
Motion. Second. Yes, sir.
Do you have a second?
Yes. Would anyone from the public like to address the commission on this item? All right, roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Number three under new business is consideration of memorandum 18-223 regarding a grant request for a federal supplemental appropriation for the reconstruction of Crosswind Runway 119 at Chan Gurnee Municipal Airport. What is your pleasure?
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Mingo, would you explain this item for the public?
So in March, at the federal level, there was $1 billion approved for aviation-related improvements at eligible airports. Yankton on that list of eligibility is not a high priority eligible airport, but we are still eligible. And we have a large project that's been planned for the next three years, and that's the reconstruction of our Crosswind Runway. It would be a total reconstruction of it, not just a resurfacing. And we thought that since it's 100% grant funding, that why not go ahead and throw our hat in the ring? You never know on programs like that whether or not there'll be a bunch of applicants that are prepared and ready to apply for it. So you might, you know, you might be fortunate enough to receive some funding. So it would be $2.3 million, and that would be engineering and project included in that cost. And the caveat is, is that we would need to front the cost of the engineering to be eligible for the grant. So that's, you know, $150,000 approximately in engineering to design the project. Worst-case scenario, if we are not successful in receiving the grant money, that would be plugged into our future funding formula with our standard FAA and state, you know, financing ratios. So that would mean we'd be reimbursed all but 5% of that, because our share in our standard ratio is 5%. So it's an attempt at accessing some money that, you know, we're hopeful for, but we're trying not to get our hopes up too high because there'll be other airports that are a higher priority. And I'd be happy to try and answer any questions.
So if we go ahead and do this and we do not get approved for 100% funding, are we prepared to move along forward and finish the project at the 95.5? Or is this just another study that we're going to...
So it is in both the FAA, state DOT plan, and the city CIP for out-year. So all arrows are pointing in the direction that this would be the next major project after the one we currently have, you know, going on with our apron hangar relocation project. This is the next big one in our five-year plan and in the FAA's 10-year plan at Yankton.
And how long could it potentially be before we are reimbursed for that $150,000?
Three years at the outside. Even if we're lucky and we're fortunate and we get awarded this, it's very unlikely that it would be a 2019 project. It's still a 2020 or 21 project. These programs take some time to work through.
Is there any more commission discussion on this item? Would anyone from the public like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Motion passes. Number four under new business is consideration of memorandum 18-222 regarding a fund transfer for an airport fuel discount. And I'm thinking we might want to have Dave give us the background on this topic before anyone makes a motion since we have some options before us.
Sure. For, for many years during the 10, 10-day July Oshkosh flying event, Chan Gurnee Airport, at Chan Gurnee Airport, we've offered a 50 cents per gallon fuel discount. We have a $1 per gallon markup. So we were essentially offering half of our markup as a discount. This past year, early in, in the spring, the Airport Board, Commissioner Mybaum was the liaison to the Airport Board at the time, discussed increasing that because it was Chan Gurnee Airport's 75th anniversary celebration. So the thought was, what better number to use than 75 cents on our 75th anniversary, which still meant, you know, we, we had a profit of a 25 cents per gallon during that period of time. During that discussion also, there was talks about a lot of other happenings at the airport. And it's, it's very clear that it's a fairly large event for the city and, and for the airport. There was, the statistics are, are in the memo, but there is quite a bit of traffic through Yankton and, and pilots do look at that fuel discount when they're deciding where to land. And since it was discussed as an event, the, the talk at the Airport Board level was maybe this is BBB eligible. The easiest way to, to proceed in that manner was to, you know, at that point, it was, the event was, was on board and we were going to do the discount anyway. The city manager has the discretion to make that decision. But it was discussed that maybe we ask for a fund transfer or reimbursement, if you will, for some amount, either the full 75 cents as an event-related discount or at least that amount above what the standard discount is. So the, the whole memo is just for the purpose of discussion of one of three options of a transfer from the BBB of a full 75 cents for the amount sold or 50 cents for the amount sold, which, or excuse me, 25 cents for the amount sold, which would be the amount above our standard discount, or not to transfer any funds because, you know, it's, it wasn't a loss, it was just a reduced profit. So I'd leave it up to you all for that discussion, and I'd be happy to try and answer any questions.
I read the memo and I went, why would we do anything? We, we agreed to give the discount. So the airport makes less money. If they have a shortage, we, at the end of the year, we'll transfer anyway. So really, it doesn't matter. At least that was my take.
I kind of agree with Charlie. I have a little bit of a problem transferring money out to the BBB, even if we did the, just for the extra quarter. They're still profiting initially the same amount of money because they're still making a quarter on every gallon. So why would we bring money out of the BBB and to make up for the extra quarters they're losing when they're still already making the quarter on those sales? So I, I would agree with Charlie. I think we just let it, let it sit and, and deal with it at the end of the year if there was a shortage.
Just for clarity's sake, it wouldn't be a transfer for the, to the airport for, for there to be more projects there. It would be a transfer simply to the general fund. So it, it's, it's an inter-fund transfer from the BBB, it would be to the general fund. But it's your prerogative.
Yeah, I really can't think of a better event to demonstrate what I think is Section 5 of what you can be using Triple B funds for, you know, marketing and promoting of our community. The fact that we had a couple hundred outsiders from the West Coast coming into our community, plus because of the nature of how they got here, we know exactly where they came from and about how long they stayed. And the time that I got to spend on the Airport Board, I know that they were treated well when they were here. Mike and the team out there do a great job of making these folks feel welcome to our community. So I see this as not just a one-off thing that we as a commission should say, man, it was great. I think this is an opportunity, not just for our 75th, but something to think about in years to come. Because the Oshkosh, Oshkosh event happens. So again, this is our opportunity to again, appeal to maybe not only those same West Coasters who came through, but all of their friends who probably heard good things about us. So to reconcile this, I think with the, with the folks out at the airport, I think is wise. So I'm really looking at option one. And again, not just as a one-off thing, but something that this commission should consider promoting year after year. Because you get to track exactly how successful your marketing campaign is, and you know how many people come in. I mean, we see license plates when families come in from neighboring states for indoor soccer tournaments, and we got a guestimate. Well, as you know, maybe 1,500, 2,000 people came in. You know, we have guestimates. This is something that we actually are able to say, this is how successful it was year over year. So I think this is the kind of thing that we can easily encourage, especially out of Triple B funds, where it specifically says, use this money for marketing and promoting your community. So these literally are hundreds of outsiders coming into our community. So I anticipate supporting option number one, transferring from the Triple B to the general fund, the full amount of the discount provided of just under $6,000. And I would hope that this is something that the commission will continue to support in the same way in the years to come.
I guess I would ask for clarification on what they would need these funds for. Because I get option two, because it offsets that 25 cents, but this 50 cents is what they've been doing normally, right? So what, what, what do they need this funding for that they can't do?
So the funding would not be going to the airport for any airport projects. It would be going simply into the general fund for you all to budget next year as, as you see fit. It would just be a transfer out of the BBB to the general fund, nothing specific to the airport.
So here comes another issue that I have with it. I think we got to be really careful. We got a shrieking BBB as it is. And we have enough people that are, that are requesting BBB money. We got to be careful to, when we address issues that reimburse things while maybe qualified for BBB funds already happened. I think we got to be real careful with that. And, and if it's something that, that we think it needs to come out of the BBB, that probably should have been planned for when we decided to, to, to do it and budget it accordingly at that point. Next year, when it comes around, we can have that discussion again. But like I said, I, I think you're treading on thin water when you're trying to reimburse things that have already happened out of the BBB.
Well, and correct me if I'm wrong, aren't we just taking money out of our right pocket and putting it in our left?
It would be an inter-fund transfer.
You know, I really like events like this where we know exactly what the dollar implications are, and it is after the event, right? So the, the airport's able to make this happen, and now we see what the dollar amount is exactly. The alternative is, hey, we've got this event that we want to throw. We want to do this event over here, and we're going to need, we think, $10,000. Here's $10,000, the event happens, it's unsuccessful. So again, this is the kind of event that I think this commission should not only support here this year, but in years to come, because it is so easily trackable, and because the event happens, and now we know exactly how much to reimburse this event for. It doesn't get much better than that, guys.
We, we did support it. And we're not arguing that we're not going to support it next year. There's no reason or purpose to transfer money. Okay? We, we agree that this is a great thing. And we, we've voted to allow the discount.
I think what Commissioner Mybaum, I, I get it. Because we want to make a statement that how this is a big event. I mean, there's people, there's just so many people that come and ask about Yankton. It's a great way to promote Yankton across, especially Salt Lake City was the biggest city. And I think it's worthwhile doing it. I think just by bringing this up, is sending a statement for the public, putting on the agenda, showing how successful it was is a win. So as far as I would support, nothing, because I, I believe this commission will continue to support this project. And probably at the 75th level, might start, set up example. And we already did. So I, I think that I understand why Commissioner Mybaum, I do understand that. And I think you made your point that it is important. And I will fight on my end as airport, as long as I'm on the Airport Board, to also continue this. Because, and there's other partners here with the Aviation Group, we help a lot in, in promoting this. We started this, and thank God for the city partnering in, because I think we can support it. We still can. And it's done. We absorbed everything. In fact, we made money still. And we still promote it. So I think we should move on.
Does anyone want to propose a motion? So I guess we will proceed, we are there by default selecting option three, which is do not transfer any funds. Does anyone from the public want to address the commission on this before we move on? All right. Number five under new business is consideration of memorandum 18-220 regarding resolution 18-75, a plat of the planned address of 401 Tulip Lane. Matthew Christensen is the managing member of White Crane Estates LLC, which is the owner. What is your pleasure?
With approval of memorandum of the plat.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone from the public like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Number six under new business is consideration of memorandum 18-221 regarding a resolution, regarding resolution 18-76, a plat of the west side of the 600 block of Deer Boulevard. Dennis Christensen is the president of Deerfield Truck and Equipment Company, which is the owner. What is your pleasure?
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone from the public like to address?
No, excuse me, I, I have a question. What are they doing? They're just breaking out a piece of ground to do something with?
So, yes. Our, our review is only for the extension for the street grid in this instance. So, you know, there is more information about what's proposed on the site, but that would be county business from their planning and zoning perspective. And our perspective is from our three-mile plating jurisdiction, extension of the street grid and maintaining that.
Thank you.
Is there any more commission discussion? Would anyone from the public like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Number seven under new business is consideration of memorandum 18-224 regarding an agreement between the city of Yankton and the Yankton Area Senior Citizen Center. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. And Dave, I believe I'm correct in saying there are no changes in this from last year?
Correct.
All right. Is there any more commission discussion on this item?
Should the date be changed on top? Since it's not the 10th?
So that's the date that they signed it. We could, we could put both dates up there just to recognize what date. Or Al could put, put today's date next to his signature on the, on the final page. They just dated it when they signed it.
Any more commission discussion? Would anyone from the public like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. There being no other business on the agenda this evening, I would ask for a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss contractual litigation and personnel matters under South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.